Well, let's get going. We got 98 people here. Well, if you more people roll in, I was kind of first of all, thank you for joining. It's literally great to see all of your faces. So a reminder, if you can, to mute yourself. I can mute you as I see if you go unmuted, but as you come in, you are unmuted. So if you can stay muted, that would be helpful for us as we go on with this many people in here. So the, it's great to see everyone. What's in a few tips on the Zoom, stay muted. You can submit questions via the chat feature, which is in the bottom. We can email them to Jess McCollum at jess@camp-arcadia.com. If for some reason we don't get your question, get more questions, email me, call me, we'll get to you after this. We are recording this, so you'll all be YouTube stars after this. So anyways, this, I mean, that we will put up on our camp webpage for folks who weren't able to make it in. And as far as how you want to view this, I have anything called gallery view, which you can see all the different squares there. And then you can press an arrow to your right and keep seeing more and more people. If you want, I got four screens of people. And but if you want to see this person who's speaking and will be rotating from our panelists, if you press speaker view, it's in your top right, then just the person who's talking will be the major picture on the screen. So cool. Awesome. I'm going to have our panelists introduce themselves. I'll call them out and have them introduce themselves. So we'll start with Stan Shiman, our LCA board president.
Okay. Hi Chip. Well, on behalf of the LCA board, I welcome and thank all of you for attending tonight's Zoom Town Hall. This is a great opportunity for us to share news about what is happening at camp, as I'm sure you're all anxious to hear about that. So we thank you for that. I am in Fort Wayne, and as I look at my screen, it reminds me either of The Brady Bunch, the opening of that TV show, or Hollywood Squares. So I think I'm going to go for Russ Miller to put an X into that lower left corner. Anyway, we're so thankful that all of you were able to join us this evening.
Thank you, Stan. Then we'll go to Rachel Katniss, our office manager. Rachel?
Hello, everyone. Like Chip said, I'm Rachel Katniss. I'm the office manager here at Camp Arcadia. I'm coming to you from the outskirts of Arcadia, up in the hills at my house.
Thank you, Rachel. Hope Arcadia Heights is treating you well. And then from the south side of Arcadia, we got Jess McCollum, our program director. Jess?
How do you like Chip said, Jess McCollum, program director, headed into my fifth season. Excited to be on this call with you tonight. Calling in from south side, sketchy side, beautiful sunny side, Arcadia.
And where's, I have Norm Albrecht introduce himself, because if last town hall was any indication, he's going to bail me out on a few times tonight. So Norm, he's, Norm is in the, what do we call that? The peninsula portion of Arcadia?
Yeah, kind of the boondocks of Arcadia. Yeah. Yeah, I'm Norm, accountant. And as Chip said, I have all the answers, although sometimes and frequently the answer is, I don't know. But it's an answer. No, chip in where I can.
Thank you, Norm. Thank you. Awesome. All right. Well, I'm going to ask Stan to lead us in an opening prayer.
Okay, thank you, Chip. Let me share just a really brief story about a God moment I had today. A friend of mine who kind of knows we've been having some issues at camp with everything that's happening. He shared with me today from Psalm 61, 1 to 3. Yes, hear my cry, oh God, attend unto my prayer. In the end of the earth will I cry unto thee. When my heart is overwhelmed, lead me to the rock that is higher than I. Thou hast been a shelter for me and a strong tower from the enemy. Just briefly in this scenario, King David, he's in exile. He's far away from home. His heart is overwhelmed. Calamity and darkness are surrounding him and covered his soul. And he pleads to God to take me to the rock that is higher than I. Of course, this rock, this refuge is God. The idea is that he had no strength in himself, that if he depended on himself, he could not be safe. He was exposed to every enemy in exile. He wished to be put in a place of safety. To such a place of safety, he prayed that God would lead him. So just as David in this moment of exile that he describes for us in these verses, we today also need one much higher than we are to save us as we go through this perfect storm. We need a rock, a refuge from the storm. We need a redeemer, because someone on the same level could not save us. We must have one that is supreme over all things to guide us through this storm to safety. Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this new day and for your unending mercy and grace that flowed down and renew our hearts each day in the joy of the resurrection. We thank you, Father, for our LCA members and guests joining us this evening, for our hardworking staff members, and for our board members. Camp is so blessed, Lord, for the support, the work, the gifts, and the love that all these individuals share with camp in the work of our mission and ministry to share the love of Jesus. Right now, Lord, we are in the midst of a kind of perfect storm that is affecting us all in so many ways, socially, spiritually, economically, physically, emotionally. Lord, you know the fears, you know the doubts, you know the anxieties and the unknowns that we are facing in this storm. We ask you now to give us strength, courage, and wisdom to face the challenges of this storm. Grasp us tightly in your arms with all your might. Guide our decisions with discernment and sound judgment, so that in all we do, we bring glory to you. And all God's people said, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Stan. Thank you. All right. I wanted to kind of go over kind of the goals of this town hall. You know, it's important that we hear from you, your concerns, your thoughts, your questions. We will do our best to answer your questions. You've put us in the role of caretakers of Camp Arcadia's mission, and we're here to serve you. And we want to kind of involve you in this conversation. Want to thank our staff and our board for the work they've done over the past few weeks as we've been looking at how camp can respond during this pandemic time. It's been intense, as you can imagine, as we look at lots of different options. And I've just been really impressed with our staff and our board as they've worked together to come up with some different plans and to help us think through this constantly changing scenario. So I'm honored and blessed to serve along with them. You know, as the board and the staff, as we've been wrestling with the pandemic, as well as the raising, rising lake levels and their impact on Camp Arcadia, what has brought us and me personally, hope and encouragement is remembering that not only is God with us, but that he's put us, all the Camp Arcadia family, together to share each other's burdens and to care and encourage one another. In almost 100 years, camp, the camp family has been through a lot. And armed with the promises of our Savior, we've gotten through it together. It is, you know, it's been intense, but you know, I think often in times of crisis, we often sort of isolate ourselves. And of course, now we are actually isolating ourselves. And the temptation can be to feel like we're alone in this. And one of the things that I constantly remind myself of and take encouragement is that you're all there supporting us. And that Camp Arcadia has an amazingly loyal and passionate supporters. Some other camp professionals, for folks who are campers elsewhere, have joined in on these town halls. And the one who was on the one yesterday was just remarking just the broad support and the passionate support that we have. And I'm sure all camps have that. I think we have it in spades. And we have such an extraordinary support. So thank you all for all your thoughts and prayers and for being here tonight. All right. So I'm going to, I'm going to turn it over to Stan to talk about kind of the board's role in this process so far. Stan?
Yeah, thanks, Chip. At the end of 2019, following the annual meeting, we had conversations, Chip and I, and we were looking ahead to 2020 and the 98th year of camp. And I recall from our conversations, we were talking about it was going to be a great year, how exciting it was going to be. And who knew what excitement was around the corner coming at us? So the board has been working diligently and frequently over the past months. Our most recent in-person meeting was March 13 and 14 in Valparaiso. We met for those two days. And subsequently, that was right at the beginning of the stay-at-home orders that were going across the country. So we were happy that we at least had one night of social gathering, and that was the last night. Most of us had an opportunity to be out and share with friends. But since that time, the board has had numerous telephone conferences that we can keep up to date with everything that's happening on the government level, both locally in Michigan and across the country, and to keep updated with all things operationally at camp. Subsequently, we decided to create a task force of individuals. And Jess McCollum will share details about the task force in just a minute. But I wanted to highlight and give thanks to this group of individuals who've come together frequently over the last couple of weeks. We're digging deep and broad into contingency planning for camp. Of course, the big question is, what will the summer look like? How will camp be different? Will there be camp? So there are many questions. We do not have answers to all those questions yet. But the formation of the task force is to gather the information, gather the data, the financial data, the operating data, the kinds of information that the board needs to make decisions. So we applaud the effort of this group for the contingency plans. This is an offshoot. This is a learning experience, but it'll serve camp well into the future in terms of if there is, God forbid, another similar crisis like this. So the task force is continuing to update their information, and the board will be using that information to make decisions. Our next board meeting is April 30th, next week. We have timed that to be in conjunction with, as we understand at this point, the Michigan governor most likely will be making another public announcement about what the situation will be in the state of Michigan. So we are working hard for you. The other members of the board, I wish just to name them quickly, Paul Culler, Kim Evler, Ryan Katanco, John Basler, Kate List, Dan Zender, Ali Frankie, Pam Barello, Donna Crittenden, Norm Albrecht, our financial advisor, and our board chaplain, Pastor Brad Hubbard. So we're thankful to all those individuals for their time and energy. So now I'd like to turn it over to Jess McCollum. She and Rachel have been leading the communication efforts for the task force, and they will share the details about what they've been working on. Jess?
Thanks, Stan. As Stan mentioned, Rachel and I are kind of co-chairing this COVID-19 task force. And so just to talk a little bit about it, as Stan said, we're really digging kind of deep into different contingency plans. So different ways to be able to, for camp to carry out its mission this summer, and what does that look like for us? We are blessed to have a group of very gifted people from the board who are also a part of that task force, people who are gifted in maybe more the finance side, the HR side, the operations side. So it is a well-rounded group that is working on this. A couple of things that I do want to highlight that we are focusing on, one of the things is our staffing. You know, we're really exploring various models for our seasonal staff. We've been in conversation with the summer staff that we've hired about what does it look like for them to serve here this summer, as well as gauging their flexibility. And we want you to know too, that for all of our staff, safety is a top priority. And so that's always at the forefront of our minds as we're working through that. We've also, as a part of the task force, been in conversation with the Michigan Department of Health, as well as keeping an eye, obviously, on the state regulations as we are going to be using their guidelines and recommendations as we move forward in making decisions. And then the task force has also been tackling kind of the programmatic side. And so what are the various models that we can carry out camp's mission? How can we continue to share the gospel in the midst of this pandemic? And what does that look like as we kind of move forward over the course of our season? I'm going to hand it over to Rachel to talk a little bit more about the task force.
So, thanks Jess. Some other areas that we have been looking at as part of the task force is obviously financially. We've been working on some different contingency plans in regards to what it looks like for different sizes of retreats, for different durations of camp. And we're looking at what revenue streams look like, what expenses look like in all those different scenarios. Other areas that we've been looking at are human resources. We're looking at different options, you know, for our full-time staffing, whether that's, you know, what furloughs might look like, or salary reduction, benefit options that we have kind of researched and looked at. Also, different registration scenarios. If we do need to cancel, you know, we've kind of set some procedures and different options in place, how we contact guests, how we process, you know, refunds, giving people an opportunity to potentially donate the deposits, kind of all those different areas. We're just trying to be prepared. In case those things need to happen, we can be ready and have procedures in place to kind of facilitate those things.
Awesome. Thank you, Rachel, Jess, and Stan. I want to go over the financial situation, and then we will get in a few, and the de-watering and shoreline stuff, and then we will get to your questions. So camp's overall budget for the year in like, before the pandemic was $1.4 million. All right. If we don't run camp at all, meaning there's no season, so we would cut all those expenses that we could possibly cut, no, obviously, you're not buying food, you're not buying train post merch, you're not, you're not planting flowers, you know, you're really, you're cutting everything that you possibly can, but you kept your full-time staff salaries and benefits where they were. You're looking at about $730,000 to run camp. So that's like, the, obviously, the staff salaries is a large portion of that, but it's also utilities, insurance, you know, things, basic things we need to keep camp running even if we don't have camp. So that's $730,000. That's an important number, because that's what we have to cover if we don't have any revenue coming from guests. All right. And so, and as Rachel mentioned, we are looking at different ways to reduce our full-time staff salary costs and other changes to that. We're not at that point yet, but we're looking at those for the future possibly, if we don't have camp. So the cash sources that we have to offset those expenses, if we didn't run camp, would be from donations, and then as well as the deposits. So we have about $325,000 in deposits for this year's season. And of course, if anybody needs a refund, we would give them, we would give that to them. But we're also going to be encouraging people to make a portion or all of their deposit or more into a donation. And then we of course have our savings. So camp has about $150,000 in savings. $450,000 of that is invested, and we would like not to sell that off because of the, where the market being low. So about $400,000, that is, that is not invested, that is more liquid. Of the $400,000, $325,000 of that is the deposits. All right. So you can see how important those deposit to donations are. We did receive the Paycheck Protection Program, and so that's a loan from the federal government. And it is an eight-week program. So we got it last week. It ends for us on June 11th. We got $137,000 on that. And our hope is that I think we can be able to use around 100,000 of that in this eight-week period, anticipating that we would start camp later. And so we wouldn't have as many seasonal staff during that period. What we don't use during this period, hopefully, that 100,000 would be able to be forgiven. That's how the PPP is working. If you use it for your personnel costs, about 75%, then you'll get it forgiven. But the rest would be a 1% loan for two years. So it's really a really great deal. So that does offset some of our expenses. And it's, we're very appreciative that we received it and thankful to Norm, our accountant, for working on the paperwork, and Maria, a bookkeeper, and Rachel, and Kim, our treasurer, for getting that done. That was a lot of work, and we got it done quickly. And from a, it sounds like one of the last people to get money after that, that whole fund dried up. As we look, and also, we are, we're not looking to take any money from the foundation right now. The foundation does have an annual distribution to camp, and that was about $18,000 this year. And that went, they designated that to cover some of the power costs of running the de-watering pump. We're not looking to take any money from the principal of the foundation. We have some non-operating costs as well. So the operating costs are $730,000. We've done a lot of work in the past year with the Spirit of Arcadia campaign, but also the work in addition to that, some additional work on our shoreline, as well as into this de-watering project, which I'll show pictures in a second. So there's another $110,000 still to be expensed towards that this year to finish off the flood protection plan, the de-watering system, as well as a new kitchen septic field and system that failed this past year. So there was $110,000 left to be expensed on that. Spirit of Arcadia, it was amazing. I want to thank everyone who helped support that. I mean, we were, we have $3.75 million in pledges and donations. That is amazing. That is like 100, that's like a million dollars more than the consultant said we could have raised. So that is just outstanding. Want to thank everyone for that. We have about $500,000 left to receive on that, on those pledges over the next few years. It's too early to tell if the economy and such will affect people's ability to pay back those loans. It seems likely that it would have some effect, and hopefully not too severe. We have a line of credit with 600, roughly $600,000 in a line of credit out with the church extension fund right now. So that's our main debt is that, is that 600,000. So any debt that we get this year would be added on to that. The good thing is the Michigan Church Extension Fund, and want to shout out to John Bates, who's a cottager, who works for them and has helped us work with them. They are lowering our rate on that $600,000, and also giving us even a lower rate for any additional debt that we might have during this crisis. So bottom line on the financials is, yes, we're going to need donations. I'm going to need those deposits to go into donations. And we're need to be able to, the board is, you have to decide what's our bottom amount, as far as how much do we need to keep in our savings account? And then what's our ceiling when it comes to how much do we want to borrow? So that we don't borrow so much that we can't pay it back in a reasonable timeframe. The, I know I'm going through lots of stuff here. I just want to go to the capital projects here and show you some pictures of the shoreline and the de-watering thing here. So let me share a screen here. And here we go. All right. You see, let's see here. What screen are you guys seeing here? Jess, are you seeing?
You just had a box pop up over top, but that's a financial sheet.
Okay, let me change it here. All right.
We had pictures the first time you shared.
There we go. How's that?
Great.
All right. That's the picture from this evening. So that is beautiful. Let me go back here at the beginning here. And this is a picture of the large pump that pumps the water out of the ground. So basically, the, our, the lake level is so high that the water table is so high that's flooding our inn and Wigwam basements. The inn is the lowest basement. It's right below, or it was right below the cement slab there, and about five or six inches below the basement in the Wigwam before we did any de-watering. And those, so the concern was, is that water get higher and higher, it was supposed to go up maybe a foot and a half, that it could actually buckle the basement floor and have significant flooding. We had started doing some like ceiling cracks and everything, but with that much water pressure, we were worried that the entire thing could kind of buckle. So a de-watering system is often used when you're like building a house, like they might use that to dry the area so they can put in the foundation for the house. So they're really more meant for temporary, but this is a more permanent system here, hopefully not forever, but for the probably next few years. So that's the pump before it's hooked up. And then now, this is what it looks like now. It's hooked up with a bunch of pipes throughout camp. It is, it does make some, some noises. It's hooked up to power as opposed to a diesel engine. And so it's got diesel engine backup. But so it's kind of like a, like a steady hum there. We're looking to make it a little bit more quiet. It's funny, the loudest part of the pump is the air escape on it, which just has a little bit of a whistle on it. But we're looking for a muffler for that. So that's right behind the inn and next to the Wigwam there. These pipes go around the entire Wigwam building. And, and you can see those little like straws, those well points that go down into the ground, about 20 feet down there. And so they are, they're the ones that suck the water up. And then here's a close-up of it. They got a little valve you can adjust on that. And so it goes around the perimeter of the Wigwam, as well as these go on the inn, on kind of outside the shanty there, on the, on the, on the north side, and then on the south side of the inn. The inn's basement doesn't go through the entire inn, like most of the inn doesn't, it has a crawl space, but setback area where the laundry is, where there's a basement. So they're well, well points there. System's working. Our water table's down, they're close to between five and six feet down. And so that is keeping our basements dry, and we're continuing to monitor the system and dial it in. We did, as to your question, we bought the pump, $80,000, and the renting option for the time we'd have it would be cost prohibitive. So it made more sense to, to purchase it. So. All right, then we're go to the shoreline. So this is a picture of our shoreline from last week. And so the good news is the most of our shoreline is holding up. Lake levels continue to rise. We talked with some coastal engineers today, and they're still projecting. It looks like they're projecting towards the lower side, but still projected to go above the all-time high, possibly another eight to 12 inches by its peak in late July. And so that's from where it is right now. Right now, it's seven inches below the all-time high. And it's gone up four or five inches just in the last month, which is, which is, which is normal. It was a very mild winter. It's been a mild spring, but because there was very little snow and very little ice, that most, all that precipitation went directly into the lake. So it went up a little faster than it, than it normally does. The, but the shoreline, the rocks here and everything are holding up well. This is a part, we put the boards back on the boardwalk where we had to take them off, and we put some smaller gravel along here. We'll fill, we'll put sand over top this. But this is helping when the waves come up and wash over top, it's not washing out this area as much because of the rock. There's larger rocks below that, and then smaller rock on top, and that's been successful. The area we're having a little bit of a concern is the area to the south. And so this is looking towards a public beach. So this is the rock refoundment here on your right. And then to your left, you're seeing, that would be like the chapel on the beach is to your left. It kind of orientates you. Looking out here, you can see there's a tractor tire. There's a lot of debris, and you see all these pieces of branches and boards. Those are all things that have just washed up, people's decks and stairs. And you see all these pieces of branches and boards. Those are all things have just washed up. People's decks and stairs just are washing up as there's a lot of erosion. Camp's property line is just beyond this, this tire. It's this, that's a jetty right there and that's where our property ends. That's where the AT&amp;T fiber optic cable goes underneath and we couldn't remove that jetty because we might damage that cable, which would cost a pretty penny. So what we're seeing erosion here. So if you were here last year, especially during the summer, there's sand all across the here. And there were sand in here. Well, now this is starting to erode. And actually talked to the coastal engineers that engineered our system today. And what they describe is what's happening here is interesting. It's like another pocket beach because you have rocks here. This is at the road end of the of the public beach. Now, it's not a very wide area of rocks. Essentially, it's the road end. But that's, see, that's sticking out. If you go further south than that, it attacks back, back or eastward there. So and you've got the rocks here. You're getting a little bit of a pocket beach. And the good news about that is, is there's a limit to how far this could potentially go back. But it still is a concern as to, as to if this continues to erode. This next picture shows it from a different angle here. You can see the erosion. This is pretty high up here, up here 15, 20 feet. And let me go back there. And and so what we're, what we're looking at is, is looking at the, the engineers. This is, we're getting the most up to date information. I haven't even told Stan this yet, but looking at some, some different options here. The, the main option would, would be to put additional rock on this, on this area here to protect this bluff and protect the chapel behind it. So that the chapel is roughly 70 feet to the kind of northeast of this, of this area. That's our concern. If there was no chapel there, we really wouldn't be concerned about this eroding because there's no other structures back there. But our chapel is our concern. And so it's a long distance. It's a lot of earth there. The earth, the land goes up there. So it would take a lot to get back there. So it's not necessarily that we are worried about happening like in the next few weeks. With the lake going up, my concern was and our concern was if this kept eroding, would it cost more and more money the further it went back to, to protect it? So rocks are one concern. It's a little bit more troubling with AT&amp;T cable there of putting rocks or digging down in that area. So we're looking at something and we're just starting to explore it. So this, who knows what will happen of it. But there are these things that are essentially Bags, like sand, sandbags that are all connected and it's made of, and it's more of a textile or like a paper type thing. So they're temporary and they're not meant to be there forever, but they're very inexpensive. And you can put them, we can put them here at the base here and dig down where it's dry, where we wouldn't need a permit for it. And that might be a nice way to protect that area inexpensively, like at, you know, maybe $5,000 to $10,000 as opposed to $50,000 to $60,000. So we're still exploring that, but definitely want to make sure that we don't have any erosion that would challenge the chapel. So that's our concern there. All right.
Chip, we had a question come in. Does the pump run constantly or only when needed to pump out water?
Thank you. The pump runs constantly. So and they're, they're, they're looking for ways to dial that, to we can dial it down. So it's, it's working at its optimum speed, but yeah, it does run all the, all the time. So. All right. I'm gonna move on to some questions here that I received via email here. And then we'll get to some of the questions that are coming in over here. So let me pull up the right document here. And all right, so we had questions come in today and someone says. This is from the EBS. In general, what is the current thought about pre-opening, like opening work, work weekend? And what's the first week that we're thinking of opening camp? We don't know. Yeah, the board is going to be meeting next week and definitely going to be, going to be looking at, at essentially June or May. And then, and the, and the most of, most of June there. And, and someone else has asked, Carolyn Bloom has asked, you know, is this going to be done piecemeal? Are we going to do this in part to the season? Or is it going to be one big cancellation? And, and I think one is we, we might not be able to control that. So there, there, there might be things that come from the state government that say that you have to shut down. I know there are two states as of yesterday that had, had already shut down all the kids camps. So like Washington State and, and the state of Arkansas have shut down through the summer all activities on that. So we don't know something like that's coming to us. The question, are family camps different than kids camps? They definitely are. And so, but we, we don't know what, what might coming from that. What we're looking at as far as, you know, that's one of the biggest questions that we have. Is how do we make this decision about the season? When do we make it? What are the factors that we consider? We've done a lot of time working with Christian Camping and Conference Association, 3CA. We're members of that. They've done lots of webinars. I've talked to family camps all along the West Michigan shoreline, some smaller ones, some huge ones. Learning how they're thinking through it. Also working with the Naloma National Lutheran Outdoors Ministries Association. Both those have been great resource for us to learn. Also the Lutheran Outdoors Ministry, which is kind of the ELCA branch of outdoor ministry. Learning from them as well as American Camping Association, ACA. So all these industry groups are kind of helping us think about it. But some of the, some of the factors are, is one, what's the government saying? What are they saying is safe? What are they allowing? And right now, the state of Michigan is in a shelter in place through April, April 28th. And they haven't sent anything past that. And so we'll be learning more about that, I'm sure in the, in the coming weeks. The other thing that, 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 of course, camps are looking at is what's the ability for their staff to be able to get there, to be able to mobilize. We are looking at different financial scenarios about a smaller camp, a smaller number of people, smaller, shorter, shorter season. Seeing about all that. And then, you know, I think another part, I think for us is this deposit to donation thing, you know. And so I think there is, we, we, we want to have camp if we can have camp. That's, I mean, of course, I'm sure you all, you all know that. We want to make sure people are safe and that our staff are safe. But then also as we, as you start looking at, if, if we wait till July to cancel retreats. When it's pretty obvious previously to that, that we're not going to have it, do we jeopardize the opportunity for people to turn those deposits into donations? As financial situations get worse, if the economy continues to worsen. So those are all lots of different factors in there. But we are committed to making sure if we do open up, that it's going to be in a safe environment. And back to the original question, hopefully looking at maybe an incremental approach to closing off camp. Like maybe the June retreats and then July and then August. But you know, we'll have to be taking those kind of as the board meets every two weeks or so and looking at that. So.
There is some questions from Sharon O'Leary, just kind of again, thinking about the, the, the health and safety. You know, what are the plans that we might be thinking about or have that will, if we are able to open camp, will keep us health and safety from COVID-19?
Yeah, Jess, I'll turn that back to you if you want to talk about kind of the staff and the health aspect.
For sure. So we're really looking to, you know, the Michigan Department of Health as well as the CDC. Who will be setting those guidelines for kind of what does it look like for people to be living and working in community together? So know that we're, we are looking to the experts to give us information and then we're going to follow their recommendations. And so whether that's testing or temperature screenings, it's stepping up our, our cleaning plans. You know, they currently, they do have recommendations out about the frequency of cleanliness and, and areas to really be looking at and cleaning. And that's a lot of what section that the task force is really undertaking is, is looking at how do we do that well? And how do we do that at camp? And what are some of those areas we really need to tackle and address?
Cool. Thank you, Jess. I see a question here about, does it make sense to reach out to AT&amp;T about the fiber optic cable? Yes, that's something that, that we're going to do. One, I think they should be aware of the erosion in that area because it could affect their, their cable. But yeah, we are in, we're starting to be in contact with them. So that's a great, great point, Paul. There's a question here, if there's no camp, what would the plan be for the already hired staff? So that's referring to, I seen Claire, that's from Claire Peoples, that you're looking at the staff that we have hired for the summer, right? And so I'm going to pass it off back to Jess.
Sure. So we've, like we said, we've been in constant communication with our summer staff. Currently, we meet with them every single week. We're meeting over Zoom just like this, having the opportunity to worship together, pray together, and then to start to do some staff development. We realize that even if there isn't camp, that they are still the 2020 summer staff. And part of our mission is helping to grow and develop those young adults. And so know that we're committed to, to growing and developing them this summer in whatever form that looks like. So we have kind of some different plans and brainstorming ideas in place for both a potential shortened season, but also the potential of no season.
See a comment on here where it says rolling closures could make it, would make it difficult to hire seasonal staff for the summer. I would agree with that. Yep. I mean, there aren't a lot of options right now for a lot of folks as far as summer, summer jobs. But yes, I think that makes it difficult for, for, for people to plan. And I think, I think that's what I think the governors are looking at as well is like them just, I mean, it's hopeful for maybe our, our peace of mind. To not think things are closed down through September, but it's making it difficult as far as planning goes. I just, my wife works, she works in the social work area and, and she was in a Zoom call today. And the superintendent, the Sleeping Bear National Lakeshore was on there. And they have, they're going to reopen. They're closed now. My family was there the day before they closed. So we kind of take responsibility for closing it down. So I blame my kids. But we, they're opening up July 1st and they're bringing in staff. They're usually bringing about 60 staff. They're bringing in 18 staff that are going to be in different, like much more sequestered housing situations. And they're really lowering the amount of work and area that they can supervise. But they're starting, they're looking to, to bring them in two weeks before that, July 1st, sequester them and then start on July 1st. So granted, we're different than the National Lakeshore, but it's how is the kind of thinking people are putting into this. There's a question here from Bill Parsons about what's Interlockon doing. I've been checking them all, all the time. They are looking to make a decision on their season essentially at the end of, the end of April is what they have said. So, so far, they have not canceled anything yet, surprisingly so, because they have such an international population that comes there in these, in the summer. So I see a question here about if, if camp is run at a reduced group capacity. Is there a set plan in place for how people will be allowed into, how many people will be allowed into camp? Or is there still limbo depending on the government decisions? There's still lots of limbo. So. We are, I think, looking at different scenarios there. I think some of the things that, you know, I think are all of our instinct is like, yes, if we could have 50 people. We did have 50 people here. Like we would have whatever we, we could have, just to have some sort of camp. You know, this idea of not having camp at all is kind of soul crushing at some, at some level. I know it's not the most important thing in, in all of our lives and it's obviously my, my job, but just my heart of heart. It's just hard to imagine people not, not being here. But once again, we, we want to do what's best for everyone and keep people safe. But when you start to look at a smaller amount of people at camp, I think some of the concerns are, what does that look like? You know, what are the aspects of camp that they could actually use safely? Can you use the playground? Can you use the roundup? Do you have to bring your own ping pong paddle? Do you, can you sit in the train posts? Are you sitting six feet from everybody in the dining room, all those types of things? So and is that type of, is it, is that the type of experience we want to have at, at camp? So sort of sense like it'd be better to have no camp than to have a camp that's really stunted in a sense. So we haven't made any decisions on that and, and I've can, we've all, I think, been seeing pros and cons to, to both things. But we're really kind of thinking through and thinking of some creative ways how to have camp, but also looking at maybe, maybe not having any camp. Might be better than having some sort of weird aberration of camp, if that, if that makes sense. So. But we also want to hear from you on that too. I think some of the concerns are if you had a family camp and 180 people were registered. And you had a bruise at the 50 people. It's like, well, how do you get to those 50 people? Is it like another drawing that you might not get into? And how does that do for guest satisfaction and taking those deposits to donations? If it's like you didn't get into the special COVID-19 drawing, so, but please give us a donation. So those are things that we're considering going forward. But please reach out to us in the coming weeks if you have thoughts about, and we'll of course be in, trying to do more of these too. And floating ideas as well. So.
Chip, there is a question here about opening weekend. You know, if it's canceled, you know, have we thought about the timeframe for management staff to be able to open up camp?
Yes, we have thought about it. It's, it's a bit overwhelming. You guys do a lot of work over opening weekend. The board's using meetings, so we're looking at you out of the window, but trust me, it's a lot of, a lot of work. And so one, I think, even if we don't have camp, there's a lot of work it is to, to at least get camp open for the season, even if we're not hosting guests. I think there's a certain amount of work that has to happen regardless as far as moving things around and such. So I think there is a lot of work there. Right now camp has a, our caretaker Franco and he has assistant Avery. We've hired an additional assistant right, right now for the next eight weeks with funds that we're paying through for the PPP to help with all the work it is to camp. To work on camp now as far as with the dewatering system and fixing things around camp and getting things ready. And Ryan McKenna, who's our archivist, is also doing half of his week working, helping with the caretaking duties as well. So I think as we get closer and see what we've canceled, we'll be looking to reallocate staff time towards that. And of course, if we don't start camp in our time, we'll have a longer horizon on that. But yeah, it's definitely something that we are taking a look at. So.
Um, Chip, Kathy Allen asks a question of how does the Arcadia community feel about camp opening and bringing so many people into the community? And is there concern about exposure and their safety?
Yes. I think that's probably a big, a big sentiment from Northern Michigan as well as any sort of resort area where people come to there in the summer. It's like, it's a double edged sword because that's how people make a living, but it's also, you know, we don't have a lot of cases up here. You know, Michigan itself is being hit hard, but it's mostly in southeast Michigan. Northwest Michigan is not being hit hard. And there's, you know, not that many cases, but there is a concern that people move up here. Or as people travel up here for weekends and weeks that there would be a, a concern. So I would say, no, I've not taught people directly about this, but just from the concerns I've seen over people who are coming up like snowbirds coming back. I think there, there definitely would be some concern.
There were a couple of other questions emailed. Once again, just kind of about, you know, will guests be required to wear masks? In certain parts of camp and know that once again, we're going to be looking to the CDC and the Michigan Department of Health as well as the governor's orders. For guidelines on that. And so that's who will be getting our information from.
Yeah. And you know, I think it should be clear, like our, our, our thoughts about, the reason we haven't canceled yet isn't, is because we're still waiting to learn more about this. And so we, we're, we are not looking to second guess the state or the CDC on this and we're looking to follow guidelines on this. So we are not looking to be rebels in any sense of trying to violate things or to push the, the envelope. I mean, I think all of us who know and love camp understand that this is not a very social distancing friendly environment, you know? And communal bathrooms and all the spaces that we, that we, that we use are of a concern. If we, if we were to open, we'd have to figure out how we could mitigate that to the best possible way. There's a question here from, from Steve Williams, which is if there are cancellations of early weeks during the full season, in the end, would, would there be consideration for renting the cottages? The families, even if the main buildings were not open and no programming? That, that is something that we are considering. We have five cottages that do have their own kitchens. Some of them are pretty small kitchens, but there's ability to do some of your own, your own, your own food there. We're also looking at, at, at situations where we might be able to rent out our rooms in the inn that have their own private bathrooms and even rooms. that have their own private bathrooms and even rooms that might be kind of assigned, one of the public restrooms there. Those are kind of the ideas we're, we're sort of looking at, maybe a limited meal option, takeout meals and a very limited programming. But those are kind of the creative things that we're sort of looking at here. It should be stated, none of those options financially end up making much, they almost, I mean, they don't make up a lot of that 730. You know, I mean, there's some impact on there, maybe $50,000 to $100,000, but none of them come close to replacing that, that normal type of income. But we are, we are definitely looking at it. So.
There's a question here for Rachel from Bill Parsons, "What is the trend of cancellations?" And I'm assuming that's referring to, have you, have you seen, Rachel, a trend of cancellations currently?
Not really. We've had a few, a few from maybe our first family weeks or just in general. There, I would say probably five-ish for kind of COVID, either, you know, they've lost their job and so they just can't afford it, or they're just worried about travel. But probably that most of them have come within the past week and we've had maybe just a handful. To that though, we did extend our cancellation, like there's no, we said until June 1st, you know, there's no cancellation fee or anything will happen if you do cancel. So that could be reasons for people not canceling yet, but we have not seen, you know, a really high rate of cancellations for this yet. I think everybody is kind of just in this unknown state. And so we early on said, right when this started, hey, you know, we will not have any cancellation fees or anything until June 1st. Let's wait and see how this plays out. And so I think that has an effect in it, but really there have not been a huge amount of cancellations.
Thanks, Rachel.
I've got a question here that was sent in in advance from Sarah Profeta. She's, she asks, you know, if we, if we do have camp, are we still offering scholarships to people to, to attend camp? And yes, we would still be offering those if we did have camp. Ted, Todd Bowman from Texas asks, "I heard Chief, Chief Shakes had the same health attributes in fighting COVID-19 as hydrochloroquine." Can you expand on this? So that is unfounded rumors there, Todd. Surprised it made it all the way to Texas. We're doing some extensive studies right now on the effectiveness of chief shakes. One possible aspect might be adding crunchies to the, the chief shake, have some promising results. So we have our team working on that. We'll be updating you on that. But no, obviously that's a joke. But the, I see a question here about online programming, kind of virtual camp options. So I'm gonna toss that to Jess.
Sure. Thanks. So we are exploring those options. They are a part of our contingency planning. I think it's really important to us that we continue to look at if we're not able to run camp at either full capacity or, or if we are have, or if we're not able to run a season, that we still meet our mission. And being able to connect with people online is one of the ways to do that. We also want to make sure that we do that well, I mean, in a way that's meaningful. And so we're, we're exploring what that looks like for us to be able to really connect the community, to foster faith and to bring joy through some type of, of online options.
Yeah. And we're, we're looking at lots of different options on that. We obviously have a lot of great deans and lecturers that have offered their ability to record some of their presentations, some more podcast options there. So, and we, I've been in conversations with, with, with different folks who, who do this for a living and seeing what are the best ways for us to sort of do this. But yeah, we're looking at, at doing something there if, if we don't end up, end up having camp. So, and I think Jess and her, and her staff, our staff, Taryn and Tyler have done a great job of our online programming so far. Our virtual camp options have been, have been wonderful and I think have really helped people through this, this sort of time. So I give a shout, shout out to them for all their efforts so far. All right. Question about, could we do testing on site? You know, I think that's, you know, as I read and, and hear things, yeah, if testing becomes more available, that's, I think that's what you're, what you're looking at is more expansive testing. And I'm sure we probably could do it here if it were available screening, gas, all those types of things would probably be in any sort of rollout in the, in the, in the future. So. All right.
If there is a, another question that came in kind of wondering of what the impact is on teen week. So I'm wondering if you can talk through maybe, you know, the board's meeting at April 30th. So what's, what is that first timeline that they're deciding on?
Yeah. Well, I mean, the board could decide to cancel more than, than, than just the June retreats, but they're looking at that kind of opening weekend, summer starter, which used to be called golf in the gospel. And then the two teen retreats, Alpha and Omega Teen Reach Retreats. That's essentially what we're, what we're, what we're looking at, at now, but it could be expanded. But, you know, that's, that's kind of what we're looking at, at, at this point. So Stan, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
No, you're correct, Chip. Yeah, when we meet on April 30th, that will be our first step in really evaluating our opportunity to open camp in a safe and efficient way. So that'll be really our first, our first look at what weeks may have to be eliminated this year. So we'll, we'll take it in an incremental approach as Chip had mentioned earlier.
Dave Brymeyer's guy, he's like, you know, is there more, maybe a more flexible approach to, to staffing with volunteers or, or guests doing some of their own work? I think, yeah, those are interesting options and things we are, we are looking at. Interestingly enough, tomorrow, 3CA Christian Camping and Conference Association has a webinar just on family camps, which is probably because I keep asking them questions and they're tired of me asking them questions. But I'm taking full advantage of our, of our membership. And, but no, there's other, they are a larger organization. So within Lutheran circles, so they're within the Naloma, we're the only main family camp. Within the ELCA circle, there are some more, but 3CA has over 1,000 camps, a part of that, and a lot of outstanding family camps. So the focus of tomorrow's webinar is, is, you know, is camp, is running a family camp gonna be necessary? Could it be easier than running a kids camp? And I think part of that is coming from the, the idea that, that the parents are there and they're supervising their own kids and camps aren't fully responsible for the, the, the children. So I'm looking forward to that webinar tomorrow, possibly learning more about what others are thinking on that. So, all right, any other questions coming in?
Yeah, Chip and Jess, I think I saw a question scrolling on the bottom that said, how's the effect of, wouldn't it be less expensive to cancel the whole season than do part of it? I couldn't see the whole question, but if you, I don't think we discussed that directly, that question.
There you go. If camp, if camp closes or runs a reduced participation, would you consider some, okay, now that's, that's a different question. Yeah. So I guess the question is, does it cost more to cancel incrementally than to cancel all at one, at one time?
Yeah, that's the question we're referring to.
Yeah, I, I know there's definitely an opportunity cost. So I mean, if you, if you cancel more sooner, then you have more time to plan for what you're gonna do in place of not having camp. I think that's, that's one of the things that we're, we're considering is playing for lots of different scenarios. You only plan for, for so much and the quality is gonna suffer if we keep planning on so many different, different, different streams. I think financially, the one factor is, and correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, Stan, Jess, Rachel or, or Norm, would be our decision, what we would do with our full-time staff. If there were gonna be reductions in salaries and benefits or furloughs or layoffs. If you made your decision earlier, you would be able to make those decisions earlier and that, those, that would reduce costs earlier. So.
And to expand on that just a little bit, we did run scenarios if we had 100 people per week or 50 or 77 and ran those at camp running for three weeks and running at six weeks. So these different combinations, which I think in every case generated revenue, but there are a lot of logistical problems with that as well. You mentioned a few of them about the planning, but then getting staff, if you only ran family weeks for three weeks and you have to bring staff in and spend a week or two training them for three weeks, that's a severe drain on the, on the management time for training and time taken away from you and Jess and, and the rest of the full-time staff. The point is, yes, we have looked at various scenarios, like Kim Evelyn of the Treasure did a good job of some, some good worksheets and those scenarios and even looked at as part of the consideration.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions out there? All right. Before I turn over to Jess, oh, I'm coming here. From, before I turn over to Jess to close us in a prayer, just want to thank everyone for, for joining. As I said earlier, I think in these times of crisis, you can have a sense to isolate oneself and forget the support that you have. And so to see all of you here tonight really means a lot to me and I know it means a lot to the staff and the board to know that we have you behind us. You're gonna be getting in the, in the mail soon, our spring appeal. And our goal list, it says about $300,000, which is a little higher than normal, mostly because the, we need to help fund the dewatering system. But the more funds we can receive now, the better decisions we can make going forward with regards to our finances and, and the decisions we have to make. So if you have the opportunity and you have the, the means to make a donation to camp in whatever size, it would be greatly appreciated, especially as, as we go forward in these coming weeks and months. Super. We, this is being recorded and we'll get it up in the next day or two here. So people who weren't here can, can view it. Jess, take us out with a prayer.
Please pray with me. Gracious God, we give you thanks. And we give you thanks for a community that gathers together. We give you thanks for a community that has the opportunity in season to worship together. God, we give you thanks for a community that turns their eyes to you in hard times. We give you thanks for a community that prays together. Holy Spirit, we ask that you continue to lead and to guide the leadership of Arcadia, to guide the board, to guide the staff. We ask that you would continue to make your presence known to our Arcadia family and remind us that, Lord God, you have called your servants to ventures of which we cannot see the ending, on paths as yet untrodden and through perils unknown. And give us faith to go out with good courage, knowing that your hand is leading us and your love supporting us through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Hey, Chip, could I make one last comment if you would?
Sure.
It didn't come up in this particular meeting, but I know there's some ACHA, Arcadia Cottage Colony folks on hand. Part of our contingency planning too is knowing if camp is not able to be open, how would that affect the families who are ACHA cottagers or town cottagers? So that conversation is still part of the mix and our planning to identify if, when and how those individuals who live in Arcadia under that, those scenarios would have an opportunity to be involved or at camp this summer. So we don't know yet, but I just wanted to make mention of that, that it is part of our contingency planning. So we have that on our radar.
Awesome. Thank you, Stan. Have a great evening, everybody. Thank you so much. Take care. Stay healthy.